Thank you, Rick.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees of Fredonia to order. This is December 4th. Our first action item here is Pledge of Allegiance.
... to the United States of America and to the Republic of Indonesia stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Johnson, can you please do the roll?
President Lynn.
Here.
Trustee Eifer.
Yeah.
Trustee Frank.
Here.
Trustee Avetland.
Here.
Trustee Siri.
Here.
Trustee Van Roen.
Here.
Thank you. All right, next item is public comment. Please note that public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Thank you. The next item is the consent agenda approving the minutes of the November 20th, 2025 bill of the Board of Trustees meeting and approving the general fund water and sewer invoices. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Any abstaining? Passed. Next item is our presentations and the motion to approve Resolution 2025-22 pertaining to Donald Doorward's service to the village. I'm going to turn that over to President Pro Tem Beglin.
All right. We have in your packet, there's a copy of this resolution honoring Don Doorward for his many years of service, his 30 years. I'm going to try to get through this. But so and I wasn't ready for it, they didn't tell me I was going to do this.
He's hung it on him. Sorry about that.
But Donald's the president when I was a rookie and so I've always come to to look up to as kind of a mentor. So, so for the last eight years, I've leaned on Don, I've learned from Don. And you know, I've kind of I don't do exactly what Don does because we don't always agree, but he's had a profound effect on me and my service. So and he's part of the reason I've been doing this for eight years and probably going to end up doing it for another, another couple of years. Just to try to, try to fill those shoes that, that he's leaving empty. So so I don't know if I can give, I'll, I'll try to read this. No guarantees. Whereas Don Doorward has faithfully served the residents of the village of Fredonia for nearly three decades in various elected positions, providing thoughtful leadership, vision and steadfast commitment, commitment to the well-being of the community. And whereas trustee Doorward's, President Doorward's leadership has been marked by a spirit of collaboration and innovation. Most notably fostering a unique partnership between the village and town of Fredonia, which culminated in the creation of the Fredonia Government Center. A visionary shared facility that stands as an elastic example of intergovernmental cooperation and resourcefulness. And whereas recognizing the importance of effective and sustainable governments, trustee Doorward was instrumental in guiding the village through a change in its form of government and hiring the first village administrator. Ensuring steady and professional leadership for generations to come. And whereas trustee Doorward championed collaboration among northern Ozaki County communities to provide paramedic level emergency medical services, thereby improving public safety and emergency care for residents throughout the region. And throughout his tenure, trustee Doorward has been a careful custodian of taxpayer dollars, a voice of reason and stability, and a source of invaluable institutional knowledge. Qualities that have earned him deep respect and gratitude of his colleagues and constituents alike. Now therefore be resolved by the president and the Board of Trustees of the village of Fredonia that they hereby express their heartfelt appreciation to Donald G. Doorward for his extraordinary service, leadership, and dedication to the village of Fredonia. And be it further resolved that this resolution be entered into the official record of the village of Fredonia and that a duly authenticated copy be presented to Don Doorward as a token of the village's deep gratitude and esteem. Passed and adopted hopefully this Fourth Day of December. So so do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2025-22 regarding to Donald Doorward's service to the village.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. And if they abstain, so the motion is passed, the resolution is adopted. So done.
I must say, the only thing I regret to say this out nothing says as much as being here or something like myself than the compliments coming from those colleagues that he served with for many years. I want to contribute too. Okay, thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
Don't leave yet. Don, we have another one for you. So I'll be doing that one. I'll give you a hug then.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
So you might want to stay here in the front row because you have not a lot of time.
There you go. The next item on the agenda, presentation of Donald Doorward's commendation from Representative Rob Brooks and Senator Dan Fain. Trustee.
And like trustee Beglin, I still remember the day you knocked on my front door looking for somebody for the architectural board. And we got to talking and here I am. After how many years? I don't even know how long ago that was.
It was even, no, it was a while ago.
Probably five or six years ago, Ben Lee's. And here I am sitting on the board. So I have this state of Wisconsin citation by the assembly, know you by these presents. Whereas Donald G. Doorward has dedicated nearly three decades to serving the village of Fredonia. Don has been a member of the Fredonia Village Board for 29 years, the Ozaki County Board of Supervisors for 20 years, and Fredonia Village President for 12 years. And whereas Mr. Doorward was a central leader in the development of the new industrial park along Highway 57, from negotiating the original land purchase, overseeing the build out of the infrastructure of Innovation Drive to the spring's groundbreaking for the new building. And whereas Mr. Doorward has been a careful custodian of taxpayers' dollars, weighing the needs of the village and the financial impact residents. Additionally, he spearheaded the creation of a council manager form of government, hiring a professional executive in the form of village administrator. And whereas Mr. Doorward served on the first, on the joint fire EMS advisory committee during the development of a shared joint ALS paramedic program between four northern Ozaki County communities, ultimately providing residents with a higher standard of emergency medical care. Now therefore, Representative Robert Brooks on behalf of the Wisconsin State Assembly with the concurrence of Senator Dan Fain under Assembly Rule 97, do hereby commend and congratulate Donald G. Doorward for his decades of service to the village of Fredonia and Ozaki County. We congratulate Don on his accomplishments, thank him for his continued investment in our communities, and wish him the best of luck in all future endeavors. Yeah.
Back to you, Don.
You're welcome.
The village and the county for the gratitude.
Somebody you run, you run the Minnesota.
That's okay. Okay. There you go. Thanks, Don.
You're welcome.
Don't be a stranger. Come by the office. We miss you.
Always a good.
Yeah.
Thanks, Don.
Take care of yourself.
I will do my best. Thank you, Don.
Yeah. You too.
All right, Don, I think like four different people want to take your picture. So if you want to come here, if anybody wants to come around with them, that'd be great. You can hold up all your accolades. What last time? Maybe you want to hold this in one hand and have it in the other hand, but hey. Don, where's your John's Pizza Grinch shirt? All right, Don, you guys can be a little bit more all right, I'm in one hand. All right, next person.
You should be a point on it. Be sure.
Okay, anyone else want pictures?
Thank you much.
Congratulations, sir.
You're welcome. Good on us.
Rick, if you want to do the next one.
All right, next on the agenda, we're passing the hat quite a bit back and forth today, so we have the acceptance of the donation of an AED for the Port Washington State Bank Splash Zone from the Fredonia Fire Department Association, Fredonia Lions Club, Ozaki Warrior Baseball Softball, and the Wamidonia Soccer Association. So the representatives would like to come forward.
So what we'd like to do is announce the installation of publicly accessible AED that's this thing here. That's going to be down on the building, down at the soccer, across from the splash pad. And the thought behind it was that we would, you know, this would be for the public to use a case for heart attack. So every second, every minute, somebody goes about CPR or heart beating, they let it go through their body, decreases their chance of recovery. So with this down there, somebody calls 911, get a code, there's a box there that it's installed and then you open by that code, and then they can start using this with the instructions, you call it a howl, a dispatch. Once that all goes in, fire departments can get a call and we're already running down their chest. Yeah, but those couple of minutes that it takes everybody to get out of the apartment and get out, that's what this is. So what we did was we, as the associations, as you know, are separate from the apartment of the village, but most of the money raised in events that we do, things like this, or purchase something that maybe people don't think about or that they might normally forgot about. This money was generated, it was cost us $2,000, we were joined by the clients, the soccer club and the baseball softball, Ozaki Warriors softball. And with all of them, we got this thing. Our hopes is that we never have to use it. But if we do, it's there. And anybody that wants to learn how to do this, the department does offer CPR courses that are trained by one of the trainers, but all we do is just charge for it. I'll spend a couple hours of the evening and I'd like to thank these guys for joining in. And all the guys, we have some signs that's what they're holding here. This one's going to be by the AED. And then there's a sideline, this is about all that, so that somebody's down there and they're like, oh my goodness, all the guys fell over several hundred feet of the road. Those of our association, since its formation decades ago, was to allow us to amplify the hope that we took and joined the department that we were you know, committing to serving the community, providing fire rescue services. And as such, this is just another way that we're helping people out. Well, quite the thank you. Keep us up, showing what the citizens speak tonight.
Rick would be happy to take it.
I'd like to pay at least four organizations for this donation and for everything else that you do for the Lions, firefighters, soccer club, the softball association, all of each part of the community. And this just shows that it could be, to be an even bigger part of this community. So thank you very much to all of our organizations. Thank you.
One of the nicest things about the cabinet, two weeks, we've got a theater in, so they probably will just freeze it and winter time.
Good call on a daily stage.
They put the pads on somebody.
Get in there, I was going to make sure you guys. Making experience on a little bit more didn't mean it's enough time. Make sure my logo's spaced out. Big smile.
All right, next on the agenda, we have a motion to approve Resolution 2025-021 pertaining to the appointment of the election inspectors for 2026, 2027 election cycle. Sean, you are, speak to this.
I can give a little blurb. We do this every two years. I'm excited to say that most of our team would like to do this again. And then we also have some fresh new faces, which I'm really pleased about. We'll do a few trainings throughout December and January in preparation for the February primary, primary. And we'll be ready to go. So I hope that you will consider approving this tonight.
All right, any discussion?
Just out of curiosity, like what kind of like do you do for everybody that wants to be on that?
So the requirement is to be 18 or over a citizen of the United States and a qualified elector of the county.
So a lot of, a lot of great people stepping up to, to volunteer for this, for this duty, a lot of seasoned veterans. I don't see any concerns with this list at all. So if there's no more questions, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-021 pertaining to appointment of election inspectors for the 2026, 2027 election cycle.
Motion.
Second? Second.
All right. Further discussion? If not, call a question. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstained?
Abstained. Abstained.
There are two abstentions. Resolution's passed.
Thank you.
Jordan, go. With that, I'll pass it back to President Lynn.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, introduction to ordinance 2025-05 pertaining to intoxicating beverages. Administrator Jenkins?
Actually, I think Clerk Johnson could do this one.
I'm sorry, Clerk Johnson. No, no, wasn't sure who to call up.
So there was, I think most of us know by this point, there was a significant overhaul to alcohol beverage statute in 2023. And the final effects of that are coming into fruition on January 1st, 2026. And now is the appropriate time to do a housekeeping update to our ordinance to kind of match what statute has provided over the last two years. So most of it is housekeeping. We, we took out a lot of the specific language and directed and pointed directly to state statutes so that when the state makes minor tweaks, we aren't obligated to keep up with them. We've also included language about full service retail outlets, like breweries, refineries, and cellery's that now under Act 73 have an opportunity to open a premises in the village that is permitted by the state, which is different from our, you know, class A and B licenses that we improve at the local level. And by adding a little bit of constricting language into this ordinance, we do still have a little bit of oversight. We don't have a final say. But we can have opinions about the premises and the operators. We've added a little bit of language about no sale event venue permits, another permitting process at the state level, above quota licenses. These are all new provisions under Act 73. Nothing changes for our local operators and license holders. Now their process still looks the same. This is largely a housekeeping to maintain compliance with state statute. Thank you. And this is just the introduction tonight. So if anybody has questions or notes, we hear them in a week and come back to you for a final, a later meeting.
Any discussion? Questions? Discussion? Otherwise, we will move on. All right. The next item on the agenda, introduction to ordinance 2025-06 pertaining to carrying weapons. Whose is that? That is, Marshall Lee?
Earlier, trustee Van Roen approached us at Village Hall with some questions and concerns about some of the language she'd found in in the statute about carrying, carrying weapons and some of the weapon related violations. With his concerns, we took a look through it and a lot like Michelle was just saying, what we found was probably a lot of housekeeping stuff that should have been probably done a while ago. This is among that category of, of violations and ordinance that in a sense duplicate state statutes, carrying a concealed weapon. We have a state statute for carrying concealed weapons. We have an ordinance for carrying a concealed weapon. It's important in law enforcement to have both of those as options because law enforcement works at its best when we can use discretion to make the possible enforcement action match the circumstances. Not every violation is worthy of a state charge. But that violation may be worthy of something and having that municipal ordinance and that ability to write a municipal citation for it is an important option for us. However, when you have language that attempts to duplicate the same thing, you run into, you run into discrepancies. In this case, some of these discrepancies I think came up just because it's an old statute and various changes and adjustments have been made over years. And some of it is, is no longer really consistent with state statute. Some of the things we found, for example, under the carrying concealed weapons. There are a number of state statutes concerning this and where you can't do it, whether or not you have a permit, open carry or otherwise. Most of those are related to public buildings. Our statutes also appears to limit these weapons in, in private business related ones as well. State statutes allows a business like a grocery store, you know, a grocery store, a gas station, whatever, to restrict, to dictate whether or not they want concealed weapons or weapons in their place. Our ordinance doesn't even give them that option. It just prevents it. There were some other things. There was some language in there about knives that are out of date. Knives being a concealed weapon. That no longer matches state, state statutes. There were essentially two ways we could do this. We could just go through and rewrite all this language and basically duplicate the language. Or the, the easier option and the one I kind of prefer is do what's called an adopted by approach. Where you just say, we have this ordinance and we are adopting the state statute. So the language, we don't need to worry about the language on our end of it because we can rely on the state statute language. And that way, when adjustments happen to state statutes, it's essentially automatic from our end. We then don't have to go back and redo it. The only way you would have to adjust it is if you as a collective body were looking for something different. But for purposes of this, I think the easiest way to address these concerns is just to switch over to an adopted by approach to these statutes. And I believe was the, was the recommendation from attorney Woodward included in there? And attorney Woodward agreed with that sentiment as well. That, that, that would be the easiest way to make these corrections. And, and get basically our statute consistent with state statutes.
That sounds reasonable. Questions, comments, discussion?
So could you give me an example then of where you would need it at a local level versus the state level and all we're doing is having like the state statutes? Because if you're already only using, if you're adopting just the state statutes, why do you need it at a local level if you're not adding any?
Well, because not all crimes are created equal. We, we, we run into a violation. It may not, while it may be a violation of state statute, that might not be the most important resolution for it.
But if we, if we make the state statute a local ordinance, it's still in violation then of the local ordinance if it's in violation of state statute, right?
I'm sorry?
If, if we take the state statutes and make it adopted into the local ordinance, then Adopted into the local ordinance, then whether. When you catch somebody in violation. They're in violation of the local ordinance and the state statute regardless.
Correct, but it gives us the option of choosing which approach to go with, uh disorderly conduct is probably the best example of it. Disorderly conduct as a concept is both a state violation. As well as a municipal ordinance violation. There's a wide range of disorderly conduct. You know, somebody that gets. Mad at a coworker and starts calling him something foul. That's a violation, it's worthy of enforcement, but not always necessarily state charged. Now if they. Uh do something additional. You know, throw a punch and miss, or there's some additional factor, maybe they make some threats. You know, uh. Then we have the option to say, yeah, this no longer fits a municipal level DC, this is more a state level DC. And then we can take that option. Uh so it's, it's just. Uh it's just an additional tool in our box when we're looking at the violation to have, have multiple ways to approach it.
Just to clarify too, the reason why I brought their attention is because I'm looking at state. Uh you know, while I went out, we had some of those in access, so like more restrictive in access to the state. So basically just making sure we're not going above and beyond what we need to for. For the state.
I mean, I could see that, that, you know, I could see the need for a local ordinance then if you are going above and uh state, so if you do have like the state. Ordinance and then. The local ordinance says. Well, we're still not gonna allow you to carry here. You know, for example, so then that would require a local ordinance, but if we're only going to adopt the state order says. I don't see a need for a local ordinance and especially with weapons, because I feel like. Any violation when the weapon isn't really a small thing, like. You know, it's not really generally a small, like. With the disorderly where a coworker says something foul to another coworker. It's different, but if they waved a weapon at a coworker, it's still probably gonna be worthy of. A big violation versus.
Right, there's, there's a whole rainbow of things in between that.
Okay.
Um. It's a. The, by not having a a municipal ordinance. Uh you pretty much force uh us in law enforcement to an all or nothing kind of thing. That I have to say. We're gonna not do anything here, or I'm gonna take you on a state charge. And all or nothing is not always the right answer. Sometimes that right answer is s- something in between.
So the municipal ordinance gives you the option to maybe kind of slap their hand rather than lock them up. First time around. Yeah. Especially for a small violation, something kind of minor.
Yep, it it's still, you know, when we deem, when we deem a verbal warning insufficient for whatever reason. Um. And there are lots of, you know, it's. And thirty, thirty years of law enforcement, I'm still surprised when I come to some of these things.
Think of an example of a small violation with a weapon that would warrant a slap on the wrist versus the state charge. Because, you know, we're talking about a weapon, we're not talking about. You know, somebody slapping someone.
So I, I thought I wanted, maybe correct me if it's wrong, so let's say Casey's up here, doesn't allow weapons because they don't want to have it in their place. And I walk in concealed carry, right, and somebody calls me out on it, right? And calls the police because I have it on my person. I would say I wasn't intending to do anything serious, is that an example of where you might give me a slap on the wrist?
It's, yeah, there, there's. A, a lot of people tend to think of law enforcement as, it's a very black and white thing. It's not, there are lots of shades of gray. Um. You know, you uh the, the one example I got where someone might consider it would be uh. Guy gets off of work, he has a concealed carry permit. Um. It is a violation, he has no business being there. Goes to a bar, he's having a drink, he's not drunk. Someone sees the bulge, calls us, we get there, he's not drunk. Every circumstance says he stopped for a drink, which he does every day, he's heading home. Um he's. He's not causing a disturbance, never has caused a disturbance. Bar staff isn't worried. It's still a violation or that can get him in serious trouble. Here we got the discretion to say, look, I'm taking that thing with me right now, down to my office. You're gonna show up at my office tomorrow, get your ticket, get your gun, and this is never gonna happen again. If it does. Then you're going to do.
So with it only being state statutes that wouldn't allow, in that situation, you wouldn't be allowed to do that?
I wouldn't have that option.
Okay.
And if you don't do anything. And later something happens. That potentially is is problematic too, it could potentially open up both the village and the department to some liability issues.
That's the example, so that's.
Yeah.
Once involved in the weapon where you.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, show them.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
But just to keep in mind too, the, the main point was make sure it's not excessive above, so if the state doesn't. Say you can't do this, we shouldn't have a realist. Get into it, right, making sure we're not above and beyond what we need to do uh for that, so for example. Things that were in there like you can't have airsoft guns or you can't carry certain type of, certain types of knives uh that aren't banned statewide. Uh and other sorts of different various uh tools and whatnot, so.
There, there are things in there that, the, the, the state. The state, um that's, that's a pretty good example there, the state ordinance, the definition of what consists of a dangerous weapon. Uh includes any firearm, whether loaded or unloaded, any device designed as a weapon and capable of producing death or grave bodily harm. But we had language in there that would prohibit any kind of. Uh air powered gun. Uh like a paintball gun. That really doesn't need to be in there, the paintball gun really doesn't fit that description. But it still fell in that category. Now, the obvious follow up question of that would be if someone's doing something dumb with a paintball gun like. Lighting up the neighbor's sidearms, we have other ordinances that can apply to that. Property damage or back to the disorderly conduct. I think when it comes to carrying weapons, I think we could pretty much safely rely on the state definition. To define what is and what is not a dangerous weapon, and then we can go from there. Uh slingshot's another example, we had a prohibition against a slingshot. At thirty years, I've never seen a crime committed with a slingshot. Tomorrow. Now that I've said that.
Now I have a mission.
So, um I, I think it's good to, to kind of, to, to, to hook these onto the state statutes. Uh and also. Has less necessity than as state statutes and. Public perceptions on some of these issues may or may not change, that you don't have to come back and revisit this unless you want to. You do as you pointed out, always have the ability to exceed those. Within certain constitutional limits, of course. Um. Should you find something uh vexing to you in the community?
Any further questions or discussion?
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, discussion and possible action on addendum to tid number three, developers agreement with Mirror Image. This time I think we hit up administrator.
Alright, now I can take it over, and I'll take over uh this item and the next item because they're, they're kind of in tandem.
Right.
So as you all know, we have developers agreements with all of the businesses within our industrial park. And developers agreement is that agreement signed uh by law. That says, alright, you guys are gonna build such and such value by such and such date. And in exchange, it guarantees that we get tax increment that we need in order to make the tid work. Um whenever organizations ask for extension, which is happening here, they both, both these businesses just need one more year in order to construct. Um we're fine with that, but in exchange, they pay us what's called a pilot payment, a payment in lieu of taxes. Which is the tax, taxes that the business would have generated anyway, had it actually been built by uh their deadline. Um so the two that we're talking about is Greatland Electric along South Milwaukee there and then Mirror Image. Um just to give you guys some quick background of what these guys are doing. Um Greatland Electric has finished plans that already, already went through plan commission. He just had trouble kind of lighting up contractors to get done this year, so he's planning for, for spring of next year. And then uh Mirror Image, they're in the final stages of their planned work with the plans to also be shovel ready next year. Uh they also had a large uh sale within their business that they're waiting for in order to generate the revenues that they needed in order to construct. Um so I have no concerns with extending both of these, um I believe that they're both gonna, you know, they have shovels in the ground started next year. And like I said, we don't lose anything because we're still getting the tax increment that we need to be getting. Um so of course I'd recommend approval of both and if we can get these signed by the end of the year.
Questions? Josh? Do we need to make a motion on this? Do we have a motion for discussion for the addendum to tid number three for the mirror image developers agreement?
Make a motion to uh through the. Addendum to tid number three developers agreement.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Are there any extensions? Passed. Do I have a motion for the addendum to tid number three developer agreement for Greatland Electric?
Motion to approve that to tid number three development agreement for Greatland Electric?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Any extensions? Passed. Alright, next item correspondence. Items for future consideration, I think the two points down here, we've got planning commission January fifth, but. Village Board meeting at the previous meeting, we. Had agreed to. Skip this meeting. Uh due to the holidays. So the next meeting would technically be January first. That's Thursday. And it's also a holiday, so it would be appropriate then to have our next meeting on January eighth. And then two weeks later on January, whatever that would be.
So the eighth and twenty second will be our two meetings, and then we'll get back to our normal rhythm.
And then we'll be back, alright. Does that sound acceptable to the board? Yes, alright.
Yeah, we have. Yeah, we have planning commission.
Yeah, we have planning commission January fifth. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have to say two things quick.
Sure.
Um on your desk, I, two things, I'll do the fun one, the fun one is we have Christmas party coming up, we've been doing this annually now with the village and the town together. Love to see you guys there, bring your family, bring a dish to pass, it'd be great. And then I also put on your desk our newest letter that's going out for uh businesses to solicit for. Our twenty twenty six events, um we've had a great reception so far, a lot of people are donating, so. Just if you, within your network, uh know anybody or a business organization that wants to be a part next year, please pass on the information, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Meeting was adjourned. Thank you all for being here.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, that court, court meeting will be January eighth.